All right, good evening, Cambie and City Council. We are. Cambie, City Council Work Session this evening. Tonight's work session is discussing the Walnut Street Extension. And the power players that we have with us tonight beyond the council and the viewing audience there at City Hall is our City Attorney Joe Lindsey, our City Recorder Melissa Basset, Jerry Nelsin is our local works guru, and I believe I saw our Economic Development Director Jamie Stickel. I'm going to turn it over to the group there in City Hall to take us through the work session.
Okay, thank you. This is Attorney Joe Lindsey and indeed Jamie Stickel is here along with Melissa Basset and Jerry Nelsin. We are here to talk and to hear from Jerry Nelsin because he's the man who knows most about where we've come from and where we need to get. And he has some ideas about where to go in terms of the Walnut Street project. And I just wanted you guys to be able to, after three administrators have lightly touched this, I wanted you guys to be informed because you guys are the ones who have to make the decisions on these things before our next decision point. And so we're kind of at this place where I think more information for you guys will be helpful and then you guys can share with us what your hopes are and give us your blessing maybe in terms of marching orders so we can kind of take some affirmative steps down the road here. So I'm going to turn it over to Jerry Nelsin and I'll be here also if you guys have questions for me, but mostly he's in the hot seat, so I'll turn it over to him without further ado.
Hi, everyone. This is Jerry Nelsin, Cambie Operations Supervisor. How are you tonight?
Very good, Jerry. Thank you for being here tonight.
Good. Thanks for having this meeting on short notice like this. Just kind of wanted to get together with you guys and let you know where we're at with the Walnut Street Extension and maybe just have a discussion about it, see if you guys have any questions or want to know anything else. But right now, I'm going to try to just focus on the future, not the past, because we've been a lot of different directions on this, as you all know. So if you want to ask me about how we got to there, I can answer it, but I'm just going to kind of focus on where I'd like to kind of see this go tonight. So I've been working with several different engineers getting ideas since about, I'd say October of 2019, somewhere in there, I've been in communication about, I don't know, once every couple of weeks with the property owners that are involved in this. Some of them that have helped us acquire the green property to make this happen. They're ready for us to move forward with it. They want to know what's going on and what we're going to do. So what I'm kind of proposing is since we are going to have a new city administrator coming on board, maybe we look at this a little different direction and go with maybe some in-house engineering and get us up to speed and get caught up and get the property secure so we don't lose it. That's my biggest concern right now. I'm talking about right-of-way properties. Sorry, thanks, Joe. But yeah, getting the right-of-way, everything's secured, there's, what is it? How much do we need to get? I had it written down here. I think we need about 186,000 square feet of it, so between the four property owners. But anyways, so yeah, if you have any questions right now, let me know on that. What are you guys thinking? We still go on this?
Well, Jerry, can you give us some, so as you were alluding to, we've got property owners involved to be able to do the road, right? We're connecting Walnut out of the industrial park into 99E. And as you said, yeah, we've had this been on the docket for a little while in terms of, we knew that this day was coming when we would need to connect into 99 out of the industrial park. The addition of Columbia Distribution and then now, in essence, three more, four more, five more projects that are underway or looking to get underway make this a massive priority, whereas I think a year ago it was a major priority. So stoplight in it right there by Fred Meyer and whatnot helps, but we are definitely in that spot where we need to get this road done and taken care of. So I think what, maybe you could for us give some background on beyond the securing of the property piece, right? We've got landowners that we've worked with and are working with and are interested in seeing this road come to fruition. What work has already been done to this point? And who are we working with and where do we need to go from here?
So the work that has, to start with that, the work that has been done, the work has been done, there's been communication, we kind of have a pretty good idea where the road's going to go. We've done a topo survey on it to see elevations. The big concern was is figuring out how to serve it with sewer because of the area, but it's kind of in a unique area with the terrain. We got that all figured out, but other than that, that's about all we've gotten to on it. So communication, but we do have everyone still on board that wants to participate in it, all the property owners. So I apologize for not being further along than that, but that's where it is.
So what work has been done internally so far, Jerry, by you and your team? Or, you know, who have we brought in to do work already?
There's been a little bit of free work done. There's been several different, an RFQs, an RFP, there's been, it's been out to bid several times in between different city administrators, looking to go different directions. So there's been just work provided from engineers that wanted the project.
Okay.
The property owners, I've had, I have, the other work that I've done is I've met with other property owners that bought up to this to see if they wanted to get in on this to adjust the road to meet theirs. I believe the Knopf Singer family I met with, I have met with Mr. Jarboe and Steve Skinner, the manuals on numerous occasions throughout this. And we're just kind of, Brian, at this point where we need to, we need to take the next step and start working on securing the right-of-way.
Okay, so that's the next step. Okay, so.
That's, yes. Yeah, the other thing Jamie reminded me, it's been, this has been going on for so long with everything else, I apologize, it's starting to come back to me. We did have a meeting with our planning department and ODOT. We've had a little bit of communication with Clackamas County and they went over the procedures with us that we would have to do to make this happen. I know that the tasks sound overwhelming when we met with them, but it seemed really realistic to me to get to make it happen, just with being able to show to fund the project, to have the right-of-way secured and everything else. Then they go into a review process later to make sure that the signal can go in. But just talking off the record with them, it seemed like it was more than doable.
So when you say, okay, so obviously ODOT, major massive partner in this project because we got to tie into their highway. And you say it's, they seem like it's mostly doable, like?
They're, depending on what driveways and stuff like that are eliminated, that's what determines on the connections on 99E. So that's why we kind of need to get to this next step so that we can start putting information together for them so that we can review that and make sure we're going in the right direction on that, so that we can, so they allow us to have a connection at that point.
Right. So the next step we need to go to is securing the rights of way and that's working with the property owners, correct?
That's correct. I think that's really important, just in case someone decides to sell back out and then the whole thing's for nothing. That's, that's my biggest worry at this point is getting that secured.
I will stop my barrage of questions and I will let the rest of the council throw in. Counselor Parker, you waved your hand first.
Mayor, I thought you did a fine job of teeing that up for us. A little bit on the background on this. Now let's remember when the Cambie Pioneer Industrial Park was created, the city promised the landowners that the city would do whatever it took to ensure that the park would be built out. So we have an initial commitment to those people to do that. Secondly, a word about the traffic counts and that sort of thing. And there was a past administrator, ever so briefly, but we had a discussion about this where the estimates for when the Sequoia intersection would reach what was known in the ODOT world as failure. And that is when you're triggered and you have to do stuff. Well, my position is that we should try to provide our citizens with a level of transportation service that's a little bit better than failure before we move on things. Plus, this is going to take a while. The mayor pointed out that we have a number of projects coming on perhaps faster than we imagined. So it would be my suggestion that we go ahead and pursue this as much as we can. And Jerry, I just have one question for you. That if we were to go out to bid, how much bid activity do you think we would have for a project like this?
It's hard to say right now. You know, it's, it's the, for the construction right now, I think we'd have quite a few bids, but for the engineering, I don't know. I mean, it's, we've, if that's what you're asking for the whole portion. Yeah, I think, I think we'd have probably two. It'd probably be Curran McLeod and PBS engineer.
All right. Well, then, then my question is, Jerry, can you and your crew do as good of a job at the same or less money?
Yeah, I got, we got prices from both of them and for PBS to, there's this, they did a really nice job of putting together their, the initial start of this project. And to get to the point where we could put it out to bid is where these, we're both doing it. They're looking at about 152,000 or $153,000 to do it, or 155. And then Curran McLeod, talking to them to see what they could do to get to the same point, they're around 80,000. And, and it's just, I mean, just to, they've done all of our industrial parks, so it's not reinventing the wheel. They're just fast, they've dealt with all the property owners and getting from the point from there to construction is just super fast for them because they've done our whole industrial park up to this point, so.
Well, that would be my inclination is to go with Curran McLeod, their knowledge of the park, and then to have your crew show us what they can do. I've been wanting to do that for a number of years and I think this would be a terrific, terrific opportunity for us to try and do some things in-house. A few years ago, the Oregon Department of Transportation began this project where they let their own crews bid on projects in an effort to do it faster, cheaper. And in fact, now that has continued as a tradition and I would like for us to give that a try as well. So that's, so Mayor, that's where my vote is, that yes, we owe it to the property owners and two, let's not lose any of our right-of-way because all of this will be for naught if somebody decides that they're going to go somewhere else.
Great, thank you, Counselor Parker. Counselor Varwig?
Yeah, Jerry, you said that you have a kind of a preliminary idea of where the road is going to go?
I do.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that if we go out and get a bunch of right-of-way and then we change the direction of the road, that we don't have to go and secure further right-of-way. So are we, are we sure that we'll get them correct right-of-way?
Yeah, positive. It's, there's really only one good place that goes through there just because of the pond, the wetlands and stuff like that. So yeah, everyone's on board with the direction we're going right now. So that's, that's just, that's the big, that's the hardest part in this normally is getting everyone on board and they, they all, they all like what's going on here, so.
Yeah, very good. Well, it's great to have your community partners and people that want to see this succeed as well as we do. So I definitely am in agreement as well that we need to get this going sooner than later, make sure that we have a better connection to that industrial park. I think that will make life a lot easier for a lot of people. So I'm definitely in favor of trying to get that right-of-way as soon as we can.
Okay. So thank you, Counselor Varwig, I appreciate that. So to revisit a comment that Counselor Parker made about the failure point of Sequoia and 99 and trying to get there before, sorry, us getting there, this road completed before we reached that point. I, I know that that conversation was, timeframe-wise was doing this project, you know, I think in, within the next six, seven to 10 years. That seems ridiculous to me. Can we get this done in two?
No.
Can we do it?
Sorry, I don't, I don't know if I've ever told you that, but.
You told me no?
We could sure try. We could sure try, but I just to be, right now with COVID, with all that, with the ODOT, I think, I think if you wanted to get the road built up to 99, yes, but getting the connection's going to take some time, I feel.
So, Jerry, you realize you just told the mayor no?
I know, I never have done that, I apologize.
So that's okay. I, I would rather you be honest with me and tell me no, that we can't do it in two years instead of sit there and tell me yes, and then I would get mad for falling short.
Yeah.
I, I know that two years was an unrealistic expectation, but I think my point is made with the level of urgency that I want to see this get done.
Yeah, that's, that's good to know because you know how our team works, we work as fast as we can and I think it, I think it could go as we get started on this soon. I mean, unless something hangs it up, I think we can get it done in a real reasonable amount of time, I really do.
I'm, I'm going to quote the philosopher Phil Dunphy from the great TV show, "Slow is smooth and smooth is fast." So I would rather we get it right and correct than rush through it and end up falling short in various, in various areas. So again, my point being made that I don't want to wait 10 years till we have well past failure of the Sequoia intersection and we've outbuilt the capacity of the industrial park and we can't draw businesses there to drive the economics of our city to do the things that we want to do because we don't have the right road put in or that we've dragged our feet, it's taken too long. So I think my point's been made. Counselor Spoon, yes?
Yeah, I just, thank you, Jerry, for all the work you've been doing on this. I know it's a massive project. I think like the rest of us, I don't think this project gets any easier and I don't think we get more opportunities. So this is probably the time to just nail it all down and get it moving forward. And so I just want to put my support behind going ahead and moving forward with it because, especially when it comes to getting right-of-way and permission, there's if property transfers hands, we lose opportunity and you can't make up for that. So let's just do it while we have the opportunity to do it and move forward.
Thank you. Counselor President Dale?
Yeah, thank you, sir. Joe, realistically, what does acquisition of right-of-way mean? I mean, on one hand, it's everything from paying a lot of cash and buying it, or is it really just getting an agreement put together with the property owners?
Well, it's an interesting area because some of the land already has our right-of-way running directly through it. And so there's an opportunity for some horse trading of what is currently running through land to say, hey, if we give this back to you, will you give this to us? And there's other opportunities where some people have our right-of-way on their land and they're willing to maybe sell it to another landowner so that they can get more of the other right-of-way that exists out there. So there is, there is some decent opportunity to get down to brass tacks with folks and maybe not be, you know, paying out cash as much as. Everybody in that area is cognizant of the fact that when we put a road through there, it's going to allow them to then develop. And it's going to have commercial land, it's going to have higher density land, it's going to have all sorts of opportunity for that area. So they want it and like Jerry said, they've already scoped out how he can bring sewer to them, which is a pretty big deal. And so I think they're, they're in agreement with us as long as we keep moving forward so that we, it doesn't appear as if we're wasting their time, they want to come to the table and get some agreements in place. And I think there's some value added in some of these prospective horse trades that won't cost us any money.
Right. Okay, that was my take as well, is that at this point, all the parties are highly incented to make this happen, right? Nobody's going to get a better deal than having the, our highway go through there and drive up their property values and the opportunity. So good, that's something we can move on. You and I talked the other day, a concern I had about when it comes to actually funding the development. We need a lot of money to do this, right? And a few of us have been talking about going out and publicly bonding, going out to the markets, getting the money to do this, as well as also maybe at the same time throwing in street maintenance, because we do have some good revenue sources to service that debt. As we were talking the other day, one of the concerns typically that you have with Wall Street is they want to know exactly what you're going to use the money on. So they want to know what's the path, what's the right-of-way position, are you really, really, really sure? And what are the costs? They're very interested in lending you money, but they want to make sure that they're lending you enough money. And we ran into that with Sequoia as well, where they had some legitimate concerns that we were actually asking for enough money to finish the project, especially over the course of multiple years when costs go up. So I don't have an answer. What I'm looking for is there's definitely a balance here between you needing that civil engineering PE stamp on your plan that Wall Street looks at and goes, great, you got a plan, it's signed off on, that's where the road will go, ODOT's happy with it. I assume they're going to need that level of engineering as well versus, hey, what does it take to start talking among four players, right? To get some right-of-way agreements going?
So yeah, this is, this is still kind of the pre-costing discussions.
Right.
And so if you're talking about trying to get really good costing down, we can revisit who and what type of contract you want to go with and which engineer you want to go with at that point, if you want to get, you know, a bigger firm to then just do your costing so that you feel like the, if you're going out for a bond or whatever it is, that you'll have a little bit more gravitas with the number. That, that is an option that we have later on. I think what Jerry's proposing right now is he has built relationships over the last two years or a year and a half that they've had discussions and gotten all of the requisite owners at least on board in spirit. And so without burning any of those bridges and without reinventing relationship wheels and getting charged a whole bunch of money to build a relationship with these folks, maybe turn on the current relationships and understanding of the area and, and do an in-house sort of get of this right-of-way and then we can revisit when we get to kind of the actual costing, if that helps with what you're asking.
Yeah, so what I want to be clear on is what is our ask for tonight? Are you just needing consensus to go ahead and let staff start those discussions with landowners and get things rolling there?
Yes. And, and so we have an engineer of record in Curran McLeod. He can charge us hourly if there's work that he can do. And it really is trying to take affirmative but preliminary steps towards making sure that we don't lose this right-of-way moment. And then we can come back and revisit, you know, specific, you know, we're going to have to have a specific amendment to the TSP, for instance. We're going to make sure that we have a very accurate design plan that then we can actually cost and then we can actually present that, depending on what the funding is and what the theory is at that time. So tonight, we're asking for marching orders, like are we going in the right direction if we're kind of following what, what Counselor Parker is saying, using an in-house team first so that we can kind of maybe get to yes on some of these preliminary discussions, so we know we're not losing out on, on opportunity?
Yeah, I think I'm okay with that as long as we're at high confidence where the road will go, right? Where the right-of-ways will be, that's really key. And if we're highly confident in that, then great. We don't want to be embarrassed later by going, oops, the road can't go through there, our right-of-way's, you know, 10 or 20 yards off, whatever. We don't want to do that. And that will, that will forestall the decision on then having to do the formal engineering.
Well, and I think we're pretty, where the road will end, some of the preliminary discussions they were having with ODOT and the two landowners sharing the, each a half of width of the road, coming out by just south of, or I guess it's west, southwest of the Route 99.
Right.
Where that little bikini coffee thing is. And so, so that's a real known. There's a ridge that you have to go along above the waterway and that's a real known. And then we own the original property, or excuse me, the Urban Renewal Agency owns the original property. And so the, the line coming straight out of Walnut's a real known.
Right.
But we want to make sure in horse trade is where it curves around to get up to that ridge. And so there's a couple of property owners in there and they have some vested interest in it being there and they also have some vested interest in perhaps horse trading for some already right-of-way that cuts up the other side of their land.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Speaking of the TSP. Speaking of the TSP.
Thank you.
For two years now, I've been saying, when are we going to add this to the PSP? We're not gonna be able to access funds without doing it.
Yes.
So could we get a little sense of urgency about including this in our TSP?
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you, Council Parker, because that was one of the notes I jotted down, was how soon can we look at that, that piece of the puzzle? And that being the TSP and getting this amendment done?
I I have a sense of urgency, and a fire has been lit, and I will look into it right away.
Joe, can we get this done in two years?
I I will defer to Jerry, although, you know what, I I am thinking that once, once this at least falls in place, it'll feel better, because we're gonna get steps done more sooner than later, so it won't feel so long. But it is hard to to build major arterial roads that trucks can drive on through forest land, so. I'm hopeful.
I was just gonna say, I don't think we'll have a big hearing or debate on the label of this being an arterial, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, yeah. Any, any other comments or questions on this? And I'm hearing from the group that, yes, we're we're giving staff the go-ahead to start securing right-of-way through conversation and working together to figure out what that will look like in terms of dollars and cents, sewer, water, power, I should say, water, power, sewer, you know, et cetera, to make that happen. Again, I think, I think it was Jerry, or maybe it was you, Joe, that made the comment about the the long-term impacts of this road, yes, financially for our industrial park businesses and landowners there, huge. But when we look at what is gonna be able to be done from a highway commercial standpoint and from a housing standpoint, and how that can be stratified through there, I think is gonna be a really big piece to planning as well that will need to, maybe not this particular group, but a council in the very near future will need to be master-planning that area for down the road. So there's a lot of positives to this piece, and potentially some other aspects that we'll have to talk about down the road as well, from other transportation aspects, so. So, Council Hensley, I don't have a picture of you to see if your head is nodding. Is this all speaking to you as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, Joe and Jerry, I think you, are you good with what you need from us or what we need to give to you tonight to move to the next steps?
Yeah, it does. It gives us a good direction, but more importantly, it gives you guys a little bit of communication, because I think we've been a little bit off-page for a while, and we need to, we need to let you know what we're thinking, and then we need to start marching in a direction, so thank you.
Yeah, you know, Joe, as you and I talked too about this particular issue, yeah, we're about to bring on a a new city manager, and I'd like the the ingredients put into the into this cake as much as possible, so that the next city manager maybe only has to, you know, tweak a few things, but for the most part, we know where we're going and how to get from point A to point B, and how we want it to go, and the timeline and the urgency with which we wanna work. So I appreciate it, pulling us into the room to get that aired out and on the same page regarding that topic, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else on this topic or comments? No, Council Parker gives me the Jedi trick of, I'm good. Sarah as well, okay. Well, thank you, Joe and Jerry and Jamie, appreciate it very much. Council, thank you for the expedient expedient work session on this. We, according to the, what do I got? I got like six different clocks. It says 6:35 on my computer clock. So we will adjourn the work session and reconvene our city council meeting at 7 o'clock. So thank you all for tuning in. Thank you, Council, for the hard work. Jerry and Joe and Jamie, thank you again. See everyone at 7.